I want to welcome all of you to our town hall meeting and thank you for coming. I'm actually very pleasantly surprised that here we are in the middle of summer and we have a packed room and, of course, the topic is one that I know is very important to everybody here and something that all of you are deeply concerned about. At the beginning of this year, we had a town hall meeting and I'll say it wasn't the best town hall meeting we ever had. And from the perspective of how we were going to manage through a series of cuts that were really very, very deep and debilitating to the campus until now is a positive story, but one that still has its fair share of pain for higher education, although I'll say it could have been worse. Today, what I want to do is talk to you about the budget as it's currently proposed, some of the areas where there's still flexibility or wiggle room, and some of the things that we did to attempt to mitigate the impacts of the budget as best we could and to make sure that we can still honor our mission of teaching, research, and, of course, supporting this great city that we're in, and again, making sure that we maintain our commitments to as many of the great people working here in this campus as we have. To all of you, before I really get going, I want to say I know it's been a tough year. I know that this is a year that's tried many of us, that's caused sleepless nights, that has created a great deal of anxiety, and I want to thank all of you who are here today for hanging in there with us and for having faith in what we do and faith and understanding that this region values what you do, that you're utterly critical to the future prosperity and success of Las Vegas, and that all of us onstage, everybody in administration, and I think everybody across the campus recognizes that this campus is made of the commitments and the faith in higher education that each one of you brings, and that's cumulatively critical for us to have the kind of campus we all want to be on. So first, thanks to all of you. Now, I'm going to run through a whole lot of numbers. So those of you in the back, if you have viewing glasses or binoculars, I think you probably want to get them out because sometimes the numbers get kind of tiny as you try to fit them on a spreadsheet. I also, before I get going actually, I am very pleasantly surprised today not only by how many of you are in the audience, but by some of the folks in the audience. I believe this might be the first budget meeting that I've ever attended, and I'm going to look at President Emerita Carroll Harder and ask if it's the first meeting you're aware of, where we actually had our coaches show up to the meeting in terms of a budget meeting. You're not going to answer that one. Okay, Carroll. I do want to say I'd like to introduce David Rice, our new head basketball coach, and his staff. And David, you need to know, we're all with you. You've got a great staff, and we're looking for something that's uplifting after this very, very tough session. And I also want to just pick on Bobby Houck back there, our football coach, who's looking for a great year this year. I had the pleasure of being in Carson City when we were discussing the stadium project with a number of legislators, and I'll tell you, I had brought bankers and business people and casino operators to talk to legislators, but nothing got me in the door as fast as having a football and a basketball coach from UNLV. Thank you very much. All right. I will now, whoops, wow, I might have to put on the Madonna mic so that I can actually see the screen. Sorry. Okay, guys back there, I know when I turn this on, there'll be horrible feedback. Can you hear me now? No. Okay. There we are. So today, what we're going to do is we're going to review the Nishi budget cuts and the UNLV share of those cuts. We'll talk about what the net cuts are, which is what really impacts our campus after we factor in tuition increases and revenue increases and losses. We'll then talk about the cut distribution by vice presidential area, academic cuts and the impacts by unit, and we'll briefly discuss the stadium project as many of you have probably been reading about it recently. I want to point out that what I will show you today is an administrative proposal. The proposal will be consulted and we'll discuss that in a moment. There it is. There's the fine print. Now, I'm actually going to get down here so I can read it for all of you because even I can't see it, but I'm going to summarize very quickly. For those of you close enough, what you'll see is that our current general fund budget is about $146 million. The proposed executive budget for the end of the biennium, where we began this year with the legislative session, was $106 million. That is a $40 million loss to just the UNLV main campus and collectively for all of the components of UNLV, it was about a $47 million loss. That, in fact, is a loss that would be difficult to recover from, a loss that would certainly limit access to students to higher education, a loss that would eliminate many programs and many of the people sitting here, and of course, along with that, a loss that would guarantee that we would not be able to honor our commitments to tenured faculty. Through the session, several different things came up, and I'm going to have to apologize. There were times when we were involved in some delicate negotiations. I wasn't always able to be as forthcoming as I like to be in terms of transparency because when you begin some of these discussions, you don't want to create false hope. You also don't want to set up a situation where everyone thinks it's okay and then they go back to cutting more. So we began first by recognizing that the governor's first initial proposed budget was decremental. It had a smaller cut in year one and a bigger cut in year two, and that that, since it was base, represented a very major cut. Through the simple expedient of averaging that cut over a two-year period and giving the same base cut in both years, that large figure was able to be attenuated to the tune of $9,400,000. In addition, and here's where one must give credit, after the sunsets, we had been vociferous and strong using foundation members, the Las Vegas Chamber, the NDA, and a number of other strong supporters of higher education in this region, including all of you who work so diligently, our alumni and many others, our foundation board, in working with legislators. And when everyone was busy saying there won't be any additional revenues and the sunsets are new revenues, we had said something very simple. We had said, "We understand your position, but if the sunsets come forward and they're continued, we ask that the Nevada system of higher education gets its fair share of those sunsets. Will you help us?" And virtually to a person, our legislators recognized that the cuts had been very deep and that we did need pieces of the sunsetted taxes in order to mitigate the really most damaging impacts of the cuts. And so when you took the additional impacts from the increase of $40 million in the general fund per year, which is what the sunsets gave us, an $80 million total, $20 million from the governor, and $60 million in addition ultimately that will be approved by the governor, that mitigated the cuts to another tune of $10 million. So that means instead of $106 million base budget for FY13, we ended up with $126 million budget, and our total cut was reduced to about $19 million in gross terms. So through the sunsetted taxes and what has been referred to as smoothing, another word for averaging, we were able to find our way to a much, much better budget than we originally believed we'd have. Right there, this budget is approximately $20 million less, so in other words, we cut the cuts in half. Now, here's where you give credit, where credit is due. I believe that our legislators, both Republicans and Democrats from both sides of the aisles, really stepped forward to help this happen. So we have to thank our leadership for helping us and helping to preserve the integrity at least at some level of higher education in this state because they recognize the significance and importance that it had. And the second thing I need to do is I need to thank the governor. The governor, in this case, came to a quick agreement with leadership, and I believe that because of that, that we have a strong, this will be a strong platform for future discussions on how revenues work in our state, and I believe that the governor and leadership should all be thanked and any of you who care to express yourselves to them, I hope you'll share that sentiment with them. Now, just because the cuts are smaller doesn't mean we're not being cut. And so when you cut about a 30% cut in half to about a 15% cut for the Nevada system of higher education, you still have to come up with a plan that you need to execute for how to take those cuts down. What I'm about to do is discuss how those cuts break down by vice presidential area, how the cuts, what the net cuts will be, then I'll take them down through the vice presidential areas. Again, I'm sorry for the small print here. I really didn't expect this many people. Our total state general fund reduction, you can see as the top line, is 19,197. Our net revenue adjustments based off a 13% one-time adjustment in tuition based off other revenue flows, but also assuming certain losses because of students being unable to pay or afford to go to school anymore and some reductions in enrollment, comes out to about $3 mil. Our mandatory increases, that is promotion benefits, promotion and tenure benefits, takes away about 1.3 mil. And in the legislative action to take tenured faculty member and now include them in both salary cuts and furloughs, we actually end up with about a $2 million savings. That means our net cuts per year are about $15 million. So we're down from the $19 million total. As we allocate those out, and again, the numbers aren't going to quite add up because we're rounding some, and frankly, they haven't settled quite yet, but these are fairly close. As we look at the numbers, you can see that we took a variety of operating and position cuts out of the president's office, which includes general counsel and the VP for Diversity Office. We took the largest cuts from the academic support areas out of finance and business, $2.7 million, which will account for about 28 FTE loss. Now, that includes both currently filled as well as vacant lines, so the impact isn't quite as grave as the number suggests. However, it's still a significant number because everybody's been bankrolling empty lines, and when you do that, you diminish your capacity to get the work done. VP Student Affairs, 19 lines and $1.4 million. VP for Research and Graduate Education, about $1 million. And that 63 looks very large, but that 63 is in GA lines, and I'm going to talk about that in a moment because that's the last cut we'd like to take. But when the budgets were severe, this is what we had to put on the table. Now, and I'll also point out that those cuts are primarily taken from discontinued graduate programs from the last round of curricular review. The VP for Advancement Office, losing about a half a million dollars in six positions, and the Executive Vice President Provost Office, losing $9,970,000 for a total of the $15 million in 215 positions, again, some of which are empty lines, some of which are currently filled. So in this budget, there is still very real pain, and there will be people who still lose their jobs, and I deeply regret that and hope that further budget mitigation can occur, and I'll discuss that in a second. But I want to point out one thing about the distribution of these cuts. In past cuts, we've taken half the cuts from the academic support areas and half the cuts from academics. And because the academic support areas are about a quarter of the budget, that really amounts to double the percentage cut on those areas. I will tell you, they've been cut to the nubbins, and there are places where we're not as functional as we need to be. Our academic infrastructure, our support infrastructure, has really been hurt. The cuts here no longer follow that paradigm. We couldn't do it. We couldn't put seven, we couldn't put $7 million or $8 million in cuts on the academic support areas and still expect to have a functional campus, and our first job is to protect the functional integrity of our campus. We have to admit students. We have to be able to accept grants and contracts. We have to, a number of, we have to be able to maintain a physical plant. We have to have an IT structure and so forth. So let's now look at a breakout of how the academic cuts are going to be administered as, this is an administrative proposal that has not been consulted, but is a very different proposal than any proposal you've seen yet because the cut level was different. And one thing I need to point out, when you begin making cuts, at some point, you switch cut strategies. You have to go much more vertical. At some point, you look to spread it around, you go a little bit more horizontal, and you look to cover. I think that as the cut totals get smaller, you attempt to preserve the integrity of academic programs, make sure that you can deliver your general education core, that you can continue to offer upper division electives at the appropriate level, and that majors can continue to proceed. So if you take a look at these cuts, you will see, and I'm just going to say, this will be available on the web so that you can all investigate it, but you'll see that the cuts are far different than the initial cut proposals or the last cut proposals that you saw, which were simply cuts that reflected the governor's executive budget. I will point out that there are still some very significant cuts to several components, education, urban affairs, the libraries, liberal arts, are all bearing large shares, but point out to you that the dollar amount doesn't always tell us a story because there are smaller and larger units, and on a percent basis, some very small units are actually taking some fairly large percent cuts. In this, I want you to note that we have nine departments that will be eliminated in this proposal still, and that we have 18 degree programs in this proposal that will be eliminated still. Now, the critical question, and however, if you look at how we've organized these cuts, and I really have to thank the provost for his hard work in this area because he's looking through and attempting to minimize impact on high-level student demand programs, and I want to reiterate to all of you, while we expect that we'll get smaller, we can't get too much smaller without losing a very significant amount of tuition. If we lose a lot of tuition, we drive much deeper cuts, and so we're walking in essence on a razor's edge, trying to balance cuts against maintaining enrollment, and that's always going to be our dilemma until we have a new formula study, and I'll talk about that at the end of this meeting. So if you take a look at these cuts, one thing that I want to say, and I want to say it clearly and unequivocally at this point, I have said from the beginning that we are a campus that seeks to honor tenure. I have said that if we didn't, and if a declaration of exigency were to be formed by the board, or if we were driven into a curricular review process that was intended to relieve tenured faculty of their positions, that that would be a bitter last resort. We exist in a global marketplace for the best and brightest. We certainly don't need to have the black eye of elimination of tenured positions from our institution if we plan on recruiting, growing, and thriving again in the near future. If you take a look at what we then did, after we had, and believe me, at one point, I thought the executive budget was the budget we were going to get, after we knew those numbers, we offered a tenured voluntary separation incentive package. I'm going to explain that briefly. It was only for tenured faculty, and it was expressly offered as an opportunity for faculty who felt that they no longer needed to maintain their tenure position to take a moderately generous buyout, and I'm going to say moderately, and I'll qualify that in a moment, so that they could, in essence, help to save other tenured faculty. And so the first thing I want to say to those who took the TV SIPs is thank you because through your actions, you're going to help defend tenure at this institution, and you're going to help to make sure that we are, in fact, emerging from this budget cut crisis stronger than we could have had that not occurred. The offer was a 1.5x salary offer, and I think many people go, "Well, how would you do that? How could you afford that? Where'd you get the money?" Well, if you consider that 100% of salary is your base salary for your B contract for a tenured faculty, you have to put a 0.3 multiplier on that. So it's 1.3 to get to your salary plus fringe. By offering a 1.5, we've given 2/10 of a percentage incentive, which is still a generous incentive to those who wanted to take this package. It was offered to all tenured faculty. It was offered over a limited time period, so people couldn't shop too hard, and we believe that it is the kind and generous thing to do in terms of helping incentivize maintaining the integrity of tenure lines on this campus. The loss is relatively small, and I'm going to qualify with a chuckle particularly when you compare that against the cost of lawsuits that might arise from challenges further downstream. So we felt that this was a very acceptable thing to do. Those, to date, and we're past the recision period, we have 48, I believe, 48 of the TV SIPs were taken, which clears out about $6.3 million worth of funding and has a very large impact. Now, before you spend that money, there are certain areas that got hit very, very hard with critical needs, accreditation needs, and in some cases, even compliance needs. And so we will have to rehire in a very, very select fashion, but it will be highly limited or else we lose the benefit. So deans, do not come to me asking for hires right now based off of the VSIP levels that you obtained. The other thing I'll tell you is that if you line up the VSIPs against the FTE loss from proposed eliminated departments, you'll see that there's about a 50% similarity. In other words, in many of the cases as we eliminated a department, many of the faculty have already voluntarily accepted this buyout, which again, helped us, will help us to manage the preceding reorganizations and departmental eliminations if we maintain this budget that we're going to have to have. I'll be happy to answer questions on this later, but for the moment, I want to point out to all of you that we're fairly confident with this budget that between empty lines now and the VSIPs, that we will not have to eliminate tenured faculty. I cannot yet tell you whether other eliminations of faculty might have to occur. It is our sincere hope that we don't have to do that. But the budget's that close, and if anything goes the wrong way, we're going to have to go back to the drawing board. There are a number of other factors that need to be considered, and I'm sorry, this is really small, but I'm going to read it for those in the back who can't see it. I've already said salary will be cut 2.5% for all employees, and there'll be a 2.3% salary reduction that will derive from six furlough days. That actually netted the university $2 million off of the tenured faculty. There were 48 VSIPs for $6.34 million. We had originally proposed tuition increases of 13% and 13%. Our students had said, "We will not pay this if the state does not enhance the general fund allocation to the Nevada system of higher education." The state advanced it as requested by Chancellor Klatch, and there's another name that needs to, we need to recognize. Chancellor Klatch virtually lived in Carson City. He sold something called the Four Point Plan. I was pretty worried about it at one point, and I'm going to tell you, the Four Point Plan worked, and it was an honest deal. It said, "The state needs to come up with additional revenues from the general fund. We will take a third in cuts. The students will contribute a third in increased tuition." The students said, "That's a fair deal if the state comes up with its share." The state did come up with its share. However, at this point, we're only being allowed by letter of intent, 1 13% increase, and I think that this is an area that's mostly significant to UNR and UNLV because the shortfall of our second year of not raising tuition 13% on a campus-wide basis will net us $8 million. Note, on a $15 million cut, $8 million is a very significant sum of money and could further mitigate the cuts that we're facing now in a way that would make them easier to manage and help us to restore some of our lost infrastructure. Enrollment is still critical. I've just mentioned that to you. We can't afford to lose a whole lot of enrollment, or we drive another hole in the budget. We need about $15 million in bridge funding. What is bridge funding? I think we've been talking about this for four years now. Basically, on July 1, we have a $19 million hole to fill, and then we net it out. Probably about a $15 million hole to fill right off the bat. Now, we have to cover that, whether it's through vacancies, whether it's through operating budgets or expenditures of one-time funds, and there is a one-time payroll date modification that could help us to meet that without driving a much, much deeper hole in our budget. And I don't want to go into a lot of detail on that topic right now. I'll simply say it has actually been factored into legislative language, and I believe that that will be a boon to the campus. Otherwise, we're out looking for another $15 million, and I will tell you that that will come dearly, and the deans would feel the brunt of it quite significantly. Our part-time budget was generated by vacant lines. In some colleges, as we eliminate vacant lines along with taking the TV SIPs, what you're going to see is that we're going to have to then re-manufacture a part-time budget. Now, whether we attempt to do that apart from one-time money or by the second year, find continuing revenue flows to make sure that we're whole and we're going forward on a strong, solid fiscal basis, it remains to be determined because we don't quite know the level of the hole. And again, this is where the extra 13% tuition bump could have a very, very significant effect in making sure that our institution's able to put all the courses on the table for the great class that we're recruiting this year. The budget reduction plan, program eliminations, and potential reorganizations will be consulted via the Academic Council and Cabinet, the Faculty Advisory Committee, which is a committee formed for the purpose of mitigating the damage or mitigating the need for financial exigency, and through the Faculty Senate PNPC, the new Program Authority Committee. Now, a couple side notes. The handgun bill did not pass. You can applaud now. The smoking bill didn't pass. All right. I'm hearing from the smokers in the crowd. The Higher Education Flexibility Bill did not pass, and that is a loss. It allowed a number of maneuvers to enhance the flexibility of universities, to either manage carryover funds, to separate tuition from the general fund, and I will tell you that this was the governor's proposal. It was a proposal that he listened to us on, and it's one that we dearly wish would have passed. It would have helped set us up for the next session in a much stronger fashion, and I won't go into the reasons for why it didn't pass right now, maybe offline, but I will say that that was a blow. And finally, sick and annual leave reductions did not pass. We will be doing a formula study in the intercession, and maybe that will help us to figure out how come some community colleges get more money per student than UNLV students get on a per-average FTE basis. I would submit to you that upper division and graduate education is probably more expensive generally than community college education. And so hopefully, the formula study will drive a more thoughtful response to building critical capacities in our state for bachelor's and graduate degree production so that we can incentivize those rather than disincentivizing them. And finally, new hires as of January 31st will not receive a retirement subsidy for health care if they retire from UNLV, which may seem like a minor thing to those of you sitting in here, but does in fact have an impact on recruiting particularly of high-quality competitive individuals who we're trying to attract on a national level. Those are the end of the major issues that surfaced during this legislative session and the ones that have primary impacts on you. I will tell you finally, and I'm going to flip this off for a moment, we had one other very large issue that I felt was a brand changer and a name changer for our campus. That was our stadium proposal. Now, I want to make sure that for all of you here, that you unequivocally understand that if we are to build a public-private partnership stadium, mixed retail area, housing area, Greek row area, and create both football and enhanced venues for the maintenance of the current contracts we have for the NFR, the PBR, and other revenue-generating activities that support our campus, that no academic dollars would be spent on that enterprise. All right? Let me make sure you understand that. We will not compromise academics in this institution to build a football stadium and this mixed retail area. The funds for this would be derived entirely from, as we originally proposed, taxing authority granted to the university through a tax increment zone, and that's what we asked legislative permission for, and/or from the revenues and proceeds generated through rents, leases, ticket sales, and other types of activities. Now, the proposal was bundled with two other proposals, both for stadiums, which I will say is an odd thing. say is an odd thing. And the combined complexity of the proposal gave it enough extra weight that it did not pass. And it did not pass in the last minutes of the closing session. I find this terribly disappointing. I will tell you that our legislators strongly endorsed the UNLV proposal, especially after getting to meet the basketball and football coach. But, they actually saw this as a net benefit to the state. The state authorizing that, and allowing us to be entrepreneurial and innovative, and to maintain and build a remarkable entertainment presence on campus, and to enhance our campus through mixed use, and to offer UNLV students the opportunity to be on a campus with a really dynamic town gown kind of atmosphere and university village atmosphere, was something that almost everyone saw the benefit on. Almost everyone. And so, it's with sadness that I tell you, we did not get that done. However, we're not done. We're looking right now at a number of alternate bonding mechanisms that we believe could allow the project to continue. We don't know yet. We've got bond council. We have a number of tax people. We're talking with our private partners. We're determined to press on, and to continue looking for creative ways to finance a project that I believe could transform this campus in the kinds of ways that the initial phases of rapid growth and the most recent phases of rapid growth transformed this campus. I'm going to leave it at that for the moment. I will not entertain from the press or anyone else any further questions about the stadium project. What I want you to know is, we're committed to a vision. And when you're committed to a vision, you don't take one setback and just say, "Game's done." You keep pushing, and we will keep pushing. And I think that's an important lesson for our whole campus. We've taken some hits this year. It's been a tough year reputationally. We made national press in ways we don't want to make national press, whether it's the threatened elimination of philosophy, or whether it's the potential of financial exigency, or whether it's because tenured faculty were at risk in Nevada. None of those are things that I would call reputation enhancers. However, where we've come out, and we have learned how to budget very well. We've created a strong, sustainable budget going forward. And when I say sustainable, in many ways, we've shed some of the things that we could ill-afford to do, that were quite expensive. I won't tell you that they were wrong. I'll simply say, in the current budgetary climate, we couldn't sustain those activities. We've asked ourselves, and every dean has, what is your core mission? What is the best thing you do? And how can you do it better? And every dean has responded. As we reorganize ourselves to be stronger and more sustainable, probably somewhat smaller, certainly more selective, we are committed to building the brand of this university. We're committed to improving the value of the degrees of students who graduate from this university. We will, as you'll see next year, emerge from this stronger and healthier than we have been for a while, and we will be ready to withstand the vagaries of additional budget trauma better than we were two or three years ago. And so, to all of you, just like we're not going to quit on the stadium project, we're not quitting on making UNLV the finest institution in this state and a nationally-recognized, strong research institution where students know they can receive a quality education, that they will thrive, and that we in turn will serve this region by helping them with economic diversification, by helping this region have a highly-trained workforce that is going to make sure that we reach a new economy as opposed to look back, looking back on an old economy. And we will make sure that our students are well-prepared as they enter the workforce, and well-prepared to make great decisions for our state as the future leaders of our state. And so, I want all of you to join with me next year, as we cinch in our belts to begin the next phase of growth and reputational growth for UNLV, because I believe in this institution, and I know this room is crowded today because all of you believe in this institution. I thank you very much. I suspect there are questions, a couple at least, and we're certainly willing to engage anybody who has questions about anything except what the specific plans are for the stadium project now. And I've got onstage Michael Bowers, our Executive Vice President and Provost, who is the mastermind of the Administrative Academic Cut Plan, although I did dabble my fingers in it, Sally Miller, the Chair of our Faculty Senate, and Jerry Bomani, our Senior VP for Finance and Business, and of course, Upfront General Counsel and VP for Research, Richard Lindstrom and Ron Smith, and VP for Student Affairs, Juanita Fain, and our Athletic Director. By the way, I purposefully today did not discuss the law budgets, the dental budgets, and the athletic budgets, or the statewide funding. I think it's safe to say, they're managing their own areas with oversight from all of us and doing a good job of it. All right. Questions? And there's microphones available, I believe.
Can I have your mic here?
Yeah. Here.
I'll let you.
No, no, no. You gotta talk into the mic.
Here's the mic.
Oh, here's a mic right there.
All right, thank you. I think you said, there's a hiring freeze still in place, and I'm wondering, and you also said, accepting areas where critical, where critical areas are necessary, correct? Are the deans deciding that, or is that...
No, we're deciding that. Right now, every dean will tell you, I've got critical hires to make, and they're probably right. There are a couple areas that, from the TV SIPS, were virtually depopulated. I don't want to necessarily talk about that right now. We've given emergency authority to one of the deans in question to immediately replace for accreditation purposes, and I'm going to say for meeting state guidelines. So, we'll, and we'll have further discussions pending the resolution of tuition outcomes and everything else for further hires. Thank you. Microphone's here, microphone's over there.
Neil, do you have any sense that the future, next biennium, is going to really produce much different situation if the tax, the whole tax base for the state of Nevada is not somehow quite dramatically adjusted, and do you think that's even remotely possible?
How optimistic am I, is your question? You know, I'm a pretty optimistic person, Carol, but I believe that we'll begin the session where we are now, with a discussion of whether the sunsets are, you know, to be continued. What I hope will occur, and I'm going to say, what I hope will occur, and I think all of us need to help put into effect, is that a more evolved discussion on how we fill revenue holes and don't have structural deficits in the budget must occur over this interim period. And if it doesn't occur, you're right, we'll be right back where we are. I think we noted that the cuts were quite bad. So, let's not forget that 215 positions more will be lost from UNLV. Having said that, I don't want to go through the conversation where we're going to be looking at cutting another 450 positions again. The damage and morale impact to this campus, I think, was devastating, and I would hope that we can have a better conversation, so that we can, we can be in a building mode, or at least a maintenance mode, where we're settling into a new size. On the other side of that discussion is the formula discussion. And the problem is, is if there's no revenues to redress formula disparities, then it will be very, very difficult, in fact, for us to do anything but what we're doing right now. So, there's kind of a yin and a yang to it for us, and we need both of those things to occur, and we need them to occur in a very thoughtful and measured fashion. Thank you.
One more part of that. Will there ever be sensible merger discussion in the system? What level do we have to get at before that happens? Your favorite question.
I would simply submit to you that we did not have those discussions this year, and that I do not see the Nevada System of Higher Education feeling that any component is not worthy of existence. I'm leaving it right there, Carol. Okay? All right. Are there any more questions? Yes?
What was that about, changing the pay dates?
Yeah, this, don't worry, it won't, it'll be nearly invisible to you. It will make a one-day difference, okay? And just let me have a little space on that one.
What about the teacher tenure? I heard about the state legislature, they're not going to allow more teachers to be tenured.
That's K-12.
Okay, thank you.
The question was, what about teacher tenure? Tenure in higher education is an honored institution. It has code written around it, and we will continue to honor tenure, and tenure will continue to be a part of the university landscape here at UNLV. Any more questions? Yes?
There was earlier discussion about the increases in tuition going to the general fund instead of staying at the university. Was that finalized?
That was part of the governor's flexibility plan, and no, it wasn't. And I'm just going to tell you, I'm very disappointed in that decision. It would have helped us particularly from a formula perspective, and there would have been some cleanup details around our non-residential tuition, because there's a $14 million IOU on that, but I'll say that did not occur, and so, we'll continue on in the same vein that we have for the past however long since the formula's been here. Any further questions? Yes. One of our student ambassadors.
I do have one, sir. And it's concerning our tenured faculty. I know that, you know, we had a process for, to provide them with, you know, a package for them to take off, but are those, are those positions are going to be refilled perhaps with non-tenured faculty? Because, you know, as a student, and I know my fellow students, we're very concerned as far as faculty that we believe that we're, you know, we had a connection with. And we know that those faculty members, they make a change and make an impact on our education. So, we want to make sure that, you know, if that, what I want to know, if those positions are going to be refilled, or what's going to happen to those positions.
Well, let me first start by saying, the connection that students form with tenured faculty, particularly in upper-division classes, as they're being mentored, and they're growing, and they're gaining confidence, is probably the single most valuable thing that occurs in higher education. That, and the bond that occurs through the graduate education process, where intense mentoring on a one-on-one level occur. So, I just have to wholeheartedly agree with you, because that is the difference in our institution, and that is the difference in a research university, where you get to really have very cutting-edge experiences and very, very acute training opportunities. But, here's the tough fiscal problem that we're facing. If we don't lose positions, we don't meet a $15 million budget cut. So, lest anyone think that we're pleased to cut $15 million, that $15 million translates to 215 positions. We cannot meet our budget if we don't cut. And the only way to cut and get that level of money is by losing positions. Fortunately, some of those positions have been vacated. Fortunately, some of those positions were subject to the TV SIPS that I discussed, and I will tell you, that means we will lose fewer of our valued colleagues than we would have, particularly in the ranks of tenured faculty. So, I'm not telling you what you want to hear, but I'm telling you how we must deal with the budget situation. The only proper response to you, recognizing that we cannot afford to reduce tuition, our tuition revenues, so we can't radically cut enrollment now, is that either as we raise tuition, we can slowly draw down the number of students to match the faculty size, or a new formula that adequately compensates the high-expense classes of upper-division education and graduate education, which as you know, are more elite educational experiences than you would ordinarily obtain, are funded through this formula study. So, that means the students have skin in the game to help us with the formula. And also, we need to look at a future of UNLV in which we're more selective, somewhat smaller, again, that has to be done very, very carefully, and where we can match the quality of education in terms of numbers of students entering upper-division to the faculty level that we have here. So, I'm giving you insights into where we are, not where we want to be, but there's a method for how we're going to get there. And I'll say, I utterly empathize with your position, and ask you to continue to stay with us. I know the provost is working very, very hard to try to make sure we're matching capacities in upper-division. And as we draw down enrollment, I strongly suspect that our first commitment will have to be to honor students who came here as freshmen, to make sure that they have access to upper-division education and can graduate in a timely way. It's kind of like you get a Priority Club card, okay? That means transfer students will have a more difficult time entering UNLV, and they'll have a harder time because they'll be last in line to take upper-division seats. I don't think that that's a good decision for the state, but I think it's a fiscal decision we're being driven into by these cuts, because loss of faculty translates to fewer upper-division seats.
Neil, do you have a sense of the timeframe in which the regents will make the decision about a tuition increase in the second year?
I don't right now. I expect there to be discussion on the topic at the June Board Meeting, and whether that's followed, because they have a year. We've got the first tuition increment. Whether that's followed up immediately, or whether there's a continuing discussion, and how that interacts with any potential summer legislative actions, and I say that there may or may not be summer legislative actions, we just don't know yet. Remains to be seen. So, I suspect there'll be a vigorous discussion, but perhaps it'll be deferred until we know more where everything shakes out.
Just to, just to, I just got wind of a rumor about UNR having classified VSIPS. Have you heard anything? And then likewise, what about us?
Our chancellor just sent us a note, as he often does, in which he said, "He sincerely hopes we are not considering classified VSIPS at this time." So, I'll simply say, system has a position on it. Why don't you get the microphone?
In addition to the elimination of the retirement health subsidies, NCHI...
Only for new employees?
Only for new employees. Faculty and staff will be experiencing a significant deterioration to health benefits, which will affect both recruiting and the health of the community. Will you be strategically advocating, following the recommendations of the NCHI Benefits Committee that was chaired by our Vice President Bomani, the possibility of leaving the current structure and advocating for a new health insurance vendor?
That's a great question, and thank you. I think all of us here in this room share a concern that our health benefits are deeply eroded, and our out-of-pocket expenses are going way up. Now, while all of us get hurt by this, and I mean, everybody in this room will be hurt by this, the impact on recruiting new, high-quality employees is certainly going to be severe. That combined with, oh, no retirement supplement for healthcare. So, I think in both cases, we need to do our level best to try to find alternatives. We know for a fact that suitable alternatives exist, and we know that we can get better coverage for less money, or at least the same amount of money that we're paying now. And so, it's a bit of a conundrum to me, why the state doesn't release the Nevada System of Higher Education to explore that possibility as a pilot, for how we can disencumber a frankly challenging state set of regulations and agencies, so that we are free to enter the marketplace and be more competitive. And I'm going to actually ask Jerry Bomani to come up. We will back the plans that Jerry came up with. As you all know, and you know Jerry's a bulldog on these things, fully, and I want to tell you, I think it's going to be an open question. I don't believe this year we'll find relief. I think next year, we may begin to experience some relief with some other mechanisms. And Jerry, you want to talk about that?
Yeah, the, as Neil says, excellent question, it's an important...
It's an important program for everybody that works here at UNLV. We did work carefully with our legislators to try to see if we could get some support to get out of the current structure in some way, even as a pilot. We were able, as many of you know, to demonstrate that we could get better coverage for lower prices, which was, to me, a fairly compelling argument. But in the end, in the end, I think from my perspective, one person's opinion, that so much was dominated of most of the session by the discussion of the budget and the inability to come to some agreement, that that sucked up so much time that in the end, when that was finally done, there wasn't enough time to do much else. And I think that's what, we fell victim to that with our arena bill too that came in late there. So, it's still an important issue. It's certainly one that we're pushing, and that's part of the off-session strategy to see, legislative strategy, see how we can move that forward, convince some legislators to allow us to set our own path relative to healthcare.
All right, I see I'm wearing you out. Oh, there's a couple more. Okay.
Another classified staff question. Are the employees going to be facing this bumping system that we're all hearing so much about lately?
I'm going to turn that over to Jerry.
As we've done in the past, we're going to give priority to try to limit any bumping. And so, to the extent there are positions, classified positions, that are subject to layoff, HR is working with all the VP areas to find out who those people might be. We're going to look at and work with everybody to make sure that any positions are filled. We give priority to trying to make sure that there is no bumping. And we can't say with certainty that there wouldn't be any, but I would say the last two years, we've had that situation, and I think in total, I don't know if Larry's here, I think there was one potential bump that we've faced in the last two years. So we've been fairly successful doing that. Just so you also know that other individuals, in addition to classified, that may, you know, unfortunately be facing a layoff or a notice of termination, HR is coming out with a training program and providing some resources and opportunities for those individuals, again, so we can hopefully support them to the extent we can in finding other positions either at UNLV or in other areas.
Is this about classified?
No, not at all. Actually, I'm a parent of a Rebel student and an incoming Rebel student. And my question is, with the looming cuts, where do we go from here if we're trying to keep the best and the brightest students here in Nevada? And question number two, how do we regain the momentum that we have in our research programs and the many exciting things that we have at UNLV? I believe in UNLV, I just wish the community would as well.
Well, first of all, I'm glad that you trust us enough to have one of your children go to school here, two! That's terrific. And I will tell you, let me offer a few anecdotes before I tell you what I think the compelling case is. In the last three years, we've overhauled our admissions program, and we have become very, very aggressive at recruiting very high-quality students. We have a better presence in Clark County, we have a better presence in California, we have a better presence in attracting many top scholars. Our honors program this past year graduated more students than it's ever graduated before. We continued to graduate the largest graduating class that we've ever had. It was the largest and most diverse graduating class. And the qualifications of our entering students this year look very, very good indeed. We're having a bumper crop year. So, for whatever reason, better recruiting, strong belief in UNLV, understanding the quality of education that you get in a first-choice institution that's located in your own backyard, and recognizing that there are incredible research opportunities so that you can grow in any way you want, UNLV continues to be, as evidenced by the U.S. News and World report, in the top 20 of first-choice institutions in this country as measured by students who are accepted versus students who come. Our ratio is 53.5%. That puts us in the ranks of Ivy Leagues and many of the most select institutions in this country. I will tell you, UNLV delivers enormous value for a very, very modest price and offers students a chance to achieve at the highest levels if they choose to achieve. Now, there are threats. And the threats are that as we look at how we're going to fund part-time instruction, as we look at how we're going to manage the loss of tenured faculty who are critical to the scholarly education of our students and give that UNLV advantage, the Rebel advantage, to our students, we need to make sure that we're being very strategic, both in how we cut, as well as in how we serve students, and that we selectively rehire in areas where there is very high student demand and where we know that students need that extra mentoring care. So I'm going to tell you that while it looks gray, and there's storm clouds that are just beginning to clear, the commitment of this institution to providing a quality general education, wonderful learning experiences, creating unique Rebel experience, and to providing students with the tools they need to enter the marketplace and be superior competitors are as good as they have ever been and will continue to improve because we have a focused and dedicated faculty who aren't going to stop being committed to what they do just because we have budget problems. And by the way, just in case anyone does forget, it's the faculty who teach our students who make the difference in this university every single day, and I'd just like to recognize them and any of you who choose to join in with me in a big round of applause for their commitment. And continue to make sure our legislators know the value of having a great institution in this town because you can't have a great city without a great university, and a great university can support this city and help it to diversify its economy and thrive and build a prosperous future. It's critical that UNLV thrive at this point and continue to generate bachelors and masters and PhD degrees for this region, which is grossly underserved from an educational attainment perspective. All right, final questions?
Do you have time for a couple of questions on the 2.5, 2.3?
I do, although I might not be the expert in how to administer them, and I'll defer to Jerry if they're too hard for me.
Okay. I think they're kind of simple, but let me, let me try. The 2.5, 2.3, is that on top of the 4.6 that we've all already incurred?
No, that is replacing it.
Okay. Second question, is the 2.5, 2.3 going to be applied each year in the biennium?
Yes.
So in other words-
I'm betting a thousand.
Okay. In other words, what I'm hearing you say is really going to amount to a 10% reduction?
No.
No?
That would be 4.8 in year one and 4.8 in year two. Since you get salary in both years, it's a 4.8% reduction ultimately in your salary.
Okay, but it's not a doubling?
No.
Okay.
No, no. It's not, it's not like the tuition 13 and 13, it's the same-
It's basically a one-time application that continues for the biennium.
Correct.
Okay. Very good.
I knew more than I thought I did. Yes, Michael?
Hi, sir.
By the way, one of our graduate students and president of the GPSA.
Therefore, I have to ask a question about graduate assistantships. You said you were going to talk about it, but-
Oh, thank you.
I just have to remind you.
Actually, I keep my nose to the grindstone, or my feet to the fire. There are two things that occurred as a result of this session that I won't tell you I thought were terrific across the board. The first is, there was an insistence that graduate students bear a portion of the tuition burden. The recommended tuition, I won't go into the background, but we fought vigorously for it to be zero, and we didn't win that one. Then they suggested 13, and we didn't accept that. Then they suggested 6.5, and I didn't accept that. And then finally, we got it down to 5%. There will be 2.5% increments, or maybe only one now, depending on how the letter of intent reads. They've been put in twice. It is a, it is the smallest increment we were able to get. We anticipate that we'll have to convert of that 5% tuition increase, 25% of those funds, just like with the tuition increases, 15% of the funds for undergrads will be applied towards financial aid. So, there'll be a very large set aside out of those funds. The problem with raising graduate tuition in our institution is that for the most part, when we do that, it gives us a fairly significant additional cost. And that's part of the challenge that the VP for Research and Graduate Dean had, which is, he has to come up with a hole that's probably in the order of about, I guess, 1.3, 1.4 million dollars ballpark now. And that was the reduction that you saw because if we didn't scale back the number of grad students, there was no other way to fill that hole. Should additional funds become available? And it's my belief that they will, either because we've been very conservative in our estimates, or because we get the money from some other structure, which we'll let go for now. The first fill that I would commit to would be to make sure that our, the hole in the graduate education budget is taken care of. After that, people would say, well, what will you do with the rest of it? And I think the right answer is, we will choose to be very strategic and make sure that it accelerates us towards our stated goals as an institution. And sometime next year, we're really going to have to sit down and take a look at the old strategic plan, give it more than tune-up, refreshen our image, decide what it is we're going to do, what the state most needs us to do, especially around areas like economic diversification and student production, and then commit funds into those areas. I suspect graduate education will be one of those areas. Thank you, Michael. Okay. I want to thank all of you for coming today. This has been, to me, a very strong turnout. I take it as a measure of your interest and support for the university, and I want to thank you all. If you have further questions, the presentation we made today will be posted on the budget website. And of course, I'm available, stop by, ask, and we'll help as best we can. Let's hope that it gets a little bit better, and for every notch it gets better, there'll be one increment more of our capacity that we retain. Thank you all much. (applause)